I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for October 23rd, 2017 to order. Would you please call the board?
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Dr. Davidson, Aviles? Ms. Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in my pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements?
The Richwoods High School Interact Club will host Halloween night, Friday, October 27th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Wear your costume for safe trick-or-treating. A spooky room games galore, including pin the nose on the jack-o'-lantern and face painting. Costumes are welcome. Admission is just five non-perishable canned goods or one new toy. Thank you to the student members of the Interact Club for hosting this annual event. I have another one here. Everyone is invited to Policetree, the Peoria Police Department's Halloween family celebration, Saturday, October 28th, 5 to 8 PM. Wear your costume. There will be plenty of candy and a petting zoo.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
There will be an informational meeting Thursday, October 26th at 6:00 PM for parents and students interested in the Richwoods High School International Baccalaureate IB Diploma Program. The application for the IB program is on the Richwoods High School website. Applications are due Friday, November 17th, 8th and 9th, 8th, 9th, and 10th grade students who reside with the Peoria Public School boundaries may apply. IB means to develop self-motivated student inquires who are globally minded and finish high school well-prepared for the rigors of the world's premier colleges and universities. Students who graduate with the IB diploma are academically ready to excel in post-secondary schools and often do so with a large number of college credits. The meeting Thursday will be at in the Richwoods High School Auditorium. That's October, Thursday, October 26th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Other announcements? Ms. Sherman?
The Peoria Public School High School Curriculum Fairs for the 2018-2019 year will be held at Richwoods High School on Tuesday, November 7th, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Manual Academy on Wednesday, November 8th, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And Peoria High on Thursday, November 9th, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. The high school curriculum fairs are for students in 8th grade to 11th and their parents plan to and register for their next year's classes. It is important to speak with your student counselor and choose the correct classes for your career pathway. Each student will receive a curriculum guide in the full next, the first full week of November. There are several exciting high school curriculum options for next year. First, the AppSCO program will be expanded to Peoria High and Manual Academy, and the course will be implemented during the school day at all three schools. Three levels of this entrepreneurship, marketing, and business management class will be offered. The first, AppSCO 1, aimed at next-year sophomore, AppSCO 2 will be added in 2019-2020, and AppSCO 3 added in 2020-2021, all giving students real-world experience. Second is the introduction of teacher education and early edu- early childhood educator pathways. Also, the upcoming fair, students and parents can learn about equal-opportunity schools, early college or dual credit, and AP classes, as well as expanding programs at the Woodruff Career and Technical Center.
Other announcements? Mr. Shaw?
The two-year process of research and discussion on changing to a balanced school year calendar for Peoria Public Schools begins on Thursday, November 2nd from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. The five impact groups formed to study the implications of a balanced calendar will meet at each group captain's school locations. Impact groups consist of stakeholders, including families, staff, and community members. Impact groups examine the pros, cons, and considerations and possibilities for each topic. Building principals who are members of the Balanced Calendar Committee will serve as impact group captains to facilitate discussion, gather input, and share with district administration. The five impact groups, group captains and meeting sites are Athletic and Extracurricular Activities, Dr. Annette Coleman, Peoria High School, Staffing, Collective Bargaining Units, and Human Resources, Mrs. Cindy Clark and Mrs. Nollee Ranscombe, Glen Oak Community Learning Center; Building and Grounds, Mr. Tom Blumer, Lincoln K. 8; Community Activities and Family Life, Mr. Ken Turner, Keller Primary School; Students, Academic Life and Achievement, Mrs. Laura Rogers, Mark Bills Middle School. Parents, staff members, and concerned citizens can still register to participate at one of the impact groups by going to www.poriapublicschools.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
This past weekend, Peoria Public Schools introduced Saturday University, a new learning opportunity for 3rd and 6th grade students to sharpen and strengthen math and reading skills. On October 21st, 33 3rd grade students and 25 6th grade students were present. Each Saturday through April 14th from 9:00 to noon, that's 20 Saturday mornings, Saturday University is open to 100 preregistered students. The program is held at Glen Oak Community Learning Center and bus transportation is provided. Bradley University students and Caterpillar Incorporated volunteers are working with students, as well as certified teachers and teacher aides. The program will include field trip opportunities, prizes, and other incentives. We are excited to see this program continue to grow. I have one more.
This is for Dr. Bob who's home ill. Buenos noches, tacos, and that's about all my Mexican that I understand. So, sorry, Dr. Bob, for this. So, the rest of this is going to be in bad English. Wednesday, October 25th is School Improvement, or SIP Day. Students will be released three hours after their start time, 10:30 or 11:30 AM, so the teachers can spend the rest of the day on individualized, school-based agendas outlined by their school improvement plan and data. For example, some schools will have staff working on rigor in the classroom training, and others will be reviewing five essentials, data, and providing workshops on writing and SEL topics, just to name a few.
We want to encourage everyone to bring their family out to Five Points in Washington this Thursday, October 26th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM for Parent University. Shuttle buses will depart host schools, Lindbergh, Mark Bills, Enrolling Acres, as well as Richwoods and Peoria High Schools and Manual Academy at 4:30 PM. The theme for this month's Parent University is family fun, and as always, we will serve dinner. There'll be board games, video games, special treats for the young and the young at heart. In addition, we'll continue to explore areas of knowledge, curriculum, learning through play as a family, English language learners, special needs students, academics, and social emotional learning. Make sure to remember your booklet so it can get stamped, and every family attending at least five Parent Universities throughout the school year will be eligible to attend the final one on the Spirit of Peoria. You can make your reservation by going to www.poriapublicschools.org/RSVP. And since we did have an audience comment last time about why are we hosting an event in Washington, just wanted to share that we are taking a bit of a regional approach to show what the community has to offer, not just necessarily those things that are within the city's limits. And I asked Dr. Karat specifically why Five Points, and she shared that some of the fine arts and athletic opportunities that Five Points can offer us are really only paralleled by maybe the Riverplex, and that's another site that we have scheduled for later this year. So, FYI.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Thank you. The community contribution tonight, the award goes to the Downtown Peoria Rotary Club for the Rotary Readers Program. The Rotary Readers Program has been working with Peoria Public Schools for their students, for our students, for almost 15 years, beginning at Teen, some of you remember Teen School on the South Side, and then moving on to Garfield, which is another South Side school. And both have been closed since then, but they've been working with us a very long time. Now, the Rotary Readers work with Tree Win. The teachers are, and I want to call Ms. Linda Wilson up, and Ms. Gina Doty, please come up and tell us a little bit about the Rotary Readers Program.
Hello. How are you?
Good evening. Hello, everyone. I'm Linda Wilson, and this is Gina Doty. We have, we've been working with the Rotary Readers, the Downtown Rotary Club. I have been working with them for seven years. It has been a wonderful opportunity. They read with our students on an individual basis for about half an hour for each student. These are individuals that take out their busy time out of their schedules because they are in business, and they usually take their lunch break and spend with my students. And they read with students. They share what their business experience is with the students and share a part of what they bring to the community. So, they bring all of that into our school and into my classroom, into the lives of my students, and it has had a lasting impact. We have a culminating event at the end of the year that we go to a Rotary meeting, and we eat, and we sing songs, and we share stories about our experiences from the year. It has just been a wonderful, wonderful experience, invaluable. It's just so wonderful that every year this program has continued, and we hope that it continues for many years to come.
Thank you. Is there a representative from?
Yes, all of them. You may come up.
All right. Thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank you all and everyone for the work that they do for our students. Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation. Is there anyone from Rotary would like to have some, a word or two to say?
John.
While she's coming to the podium?
We think, certainly appreciate the opportunity to be recognized and really would encourage many of the other service clubs in the community to consider such a program. Each of our readers only dedicates an hour a week plus drive time to participate at one school, and we do work with two students and the same two students the entire year. So, we really do have the opportunity to get acquainted with the young person, and I'm not sure that really a good word to use is that we do become mentors for each child. So, we really appreciate the opportunity and all that the school district does to include and look to improve the opportunities for our young people in this community. Thank you.
Yeah, the consistency is the key. That's good that you work with them all year. Any board members have any comments?
Thank you very much. Would you like to make some comments? We met on a vacation. You promised to take me fishing.
Are you sure about that?
You promised to take me fishing.
I am taking you fishing. I'm ready for it right now.
Ms. Wilson actually introduced us.
That's, actually, that's kind of my connection to the kids. I read with them, but then at the end of the year last year, we did a field trip and took these kids fishing. So, we took them fishing. They got to ride a pontoon, and we also did a hay rack ride. So, for most of them, I mean, they got to see geese, they got to see ducks, they got to catch fish, and they spent a lot of time fooling around and playing in the minnow bucket. So, but overall, it was a very good deal and a lot of fun, and we enjoy the kids and look forward to doing it again this year. So.
All right, good. Could you guys come together? Let's get a picture.
Thank you.
And we thank Linda and Jenna too, especially.
Yes, yes. They were the ones who said, "Don't forget to recognize us." It's a word for us.
Next on our agenda is awards and recognition. We'd like to have Sarah Ockert come up and talk a little bit about Adopt a School.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to recognize three partners. They've been around for a while. One is brand-new, but I will get to them after the first two. The first one is the Peoria First Church of the Brethren. If you guys want to come up. They work, the majority of their work is probably not thanked enough from all of us, but they provide snack packs to the school between $400 and $500, or $400 and $500 snack packs a month, whether it could be like a long holiday or a long weekend. I think they're going to do them Tuesday before Thanksgiving, something like that. One thing I like about their program, their snack packs, is they put in nutritional items. As we know, a lot of times, the less expensive things are not as nutritious. So, I appreciate that they're doing that for the children. One thing that I asked them last spring if they could give me a few comments, and they are, here's a few things that they said. "We hope to demonstrate to the children and staff that just as we care about them, so does their Heavenly Father. We are encouraged by the appreciation that is demonstrated by the staff through their friendly comments, occasional email thank-yous, and the wonderful handwritten student thank-you notes. We feel that through the snack packs and our other donations, which include supplies for the school, that we have helped to improve the quality of life and social attitudes at the school, and I think they have."
Do you want to say anything?
I just want to thank them for all their support that they have given us for the past, since I've been there for four years. And I also want to thank them for the effort that they put in in making sure that the snack packs are peanut-free. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next one is Kitty Yanko from Peoria Humane Society, and I really, I can't say enough about her.
You want to come up here?
Actually, I think she could probably say more about her program and what she's done for all of our schools, particularly this year. She is working with Franklin, Charter Oak and Hines, and she's looking at a fourth one. So.
Come back up again?
So, I'm going to have Kitty talk to you a little bit about what she does for the school, the kids.
Yes, of course, I have to say something. It feels funny to be here without an animal, but I have to say that it has been a privilege and an honor to work with Peoria Public Schools over the last 23 years through the Adopt a School program. Believe it or not, I started with my first partnership in 1994, and I remember the excitement that I felt when Michael Uzi took me on as a new partner at Irving School. And at that time, I had a big black lab, and the school and the staff and the children, of course, embraced the idea of working together with the Humane Society. They were there for me when that dog passed away, and they understood the, you know, the love that I have for animals. And it's just been really neat to see how the schools here in Peoria have embraced this idea that we work together as a community to foster compassion and love and respect for all living things. So, it goes across the board between humans and animals, and I do appreciate the opportunity to continue to do this work through Sarah this year and to be here tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've known Kitty for over 20 years, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that after knowing her so long, she truly does not just talk the talk, she walks the walk. She has spent her entire adult career educating this area on the respect and responsibility we need to have for all living things. So, we are blessed and honored at Charter Oak, and I know the other schools feel the same way, to have her team up with us. So, thank you, Kitty.
So, let us get a picture. We should look at.
Okay, and last but not least, Katie, where'd Katie go? We have a new partner at Valeska and hopefully a few more schools in the near future, but I really don't know how to say your name, the restaurant name. Do you know how to say it?
Moja.
Moja. Okay, Moja Southern Kitchen in Kramer. I was going to say Mojo, but, because they kind of have a good mojo going. So, this is, this came to me through Board Member Shaw. No, Board Member Wilson, I'm so sorry. And they were working with Valeska before I even got involved, but they have provided food for events.
Do you want to share with other things?
Sure.
Go ahead. I'll let you share with what they did, and then I'll let you talk about.
We have been striking up the partnership. We got to see them build, so we were very anxious to have them open. And when they first opened, we were there, and then they came over to us, and they've been helping with our attendance initiative. Most recently, our students work towards perfect attendance with ice cream. So, 3- and 4-year-olds were sad that the ice cream wasn't sitting in the office immediately for them when they got their perfect attendance, but they're getting a perfect attendance reward here after the first quarter, thanks to Moja's. And then, our most recent school SIP Day, we paid for, we catered out with them, and they had a wonderful lunch. I would recommend. And then, many of us go over there during lunchtime, and it's a great place. We love having them, and it's just the beginning. And so.
Unfortunately, there was a print mix-up, so I don't have their certificate, but it will be coming soon. But I also wanted to tell you that they provided the board their food tonight. They catered their dinner tonight, and I think they...
Yes.
So, I don't know if you guys want to say anything?
Please do.
So, good afternoon, everyone. Well, like you said, we have a new Southern Kitchen in Peoria South Side. It's very important to us to put that business, if you will, in that part of town. We think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to build and work with that community. One of the things that, you know, Eric and I always said we wanted to do was to build relationships with the school in that area because education is important to us. So, this is just the beginning for us. So, you know, I'm telling you to look out for big things for us as we continue to grow and work with the schools in that area. And really thank you guys for the opportunity to come speak with you tonight.
What's your name, sir?
It's Pat Robinson. I'm sorry. I'm Pat.
And your partner?
Eric Montgomery. I'm so, I'm a little nervous right now.
Let me tell you, I personally want to say I'm excited. I know Eric sees me in there all the time, but I gave him a couple of cards, and finally, I'm glad that somebody got you here. But we had, we had a wonderful dinner this evening, which included two kinds of chicken, catfish, canned yams, dressing, fried cabbage, and what else? And I'm surprised we all still awake, but we had a wonderful dinner, and it was all really tasty, and I hope everybody's jealous because it was good. Anybody else would like to say something?
I would just like to say thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for giving us the opportunity.
Yes. Thank you. They open at 7:00 in the morning.
Thank you.
Anybody want to have breakfast? They open at 7:00 in the morning.
Every day.
Every day. All right. Thank you. Next, under awards and recognition is P-A-R-C-C. Dr. Karat?
Thank you, President Ross. Next Tuesday, actually, October 31st, the Illinois State Board Report Card website will be updated for the public with data from last year's scores. We will post each school's report on their website also, as required by law. And in July, we presented the district's park data by grade level, and we have continued reviewing the data at each school. So, tonight, I am excited to share that we have 15 schools that have increased their composite scores, 15 schools. But tonight, we will recognize eight schools, and we have seven principals here. I've asked seven principals to come and join us this evening, really to sort of recognize them for their amazing leadership, their exemplary leadership, and the work that they've done to increase student outcome. I remember when I was a principal, actually, at Manual. We worked really, 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 really hard. Made Safe Harbor, I remember, I told them that story, and no one recognized it, and it was okay. I did, and I recognized staff, and they felt really good, and we had posters all around, because that was a big deal that time. And so, I know I'm embarrassing them this evening, but I did want to recognize them, because we have an old saying, "You have to feed the teachers, or they'll eat the kids." So, my saying is, "You have to feed the administrators, or they will eat the teachers." But yeah, this is, this is a really big deal. Each school and principal that we recognize has improved their composite score, including math and reading, by 3% points or higher from their 2015-2016 scores. So, we're looking at 2015-2016, and we're comparing it with 2016-2017. We do want to recognize Whittier, Whittier and actually under the leadership of Pat Sell, who's moved on. So, former principal Pat Sell increased Whittier's park composite scores by 6% or higher, including 10.5% math increase and 1.4% English Language Arts increase. So, I do have plaques for the remaining seven principals who are with us tonight, and I think the plaques are really cute. Let's see. Mark Bills, they've increased, oh, this is so cute, increased in math and reading by 3.7%. So, the principal's name is Mrs. Laura Rogers. And I'm supposed to read what it says. It says, "Mark Bills Middle School raising the bar to its academic excellence." And it has the English and the mathematics and the composite scores. It says, "Average leaders raise the bar on themselves. Good leaders raise the bar for others. Great leaders inspire others to raise their own bar." So, isn't that nice? And that's true. So, Ms. Rogers, congratulations to you and your team.
Hey, everyone. Why don't you remain standing? Because I'm going to actually ask, well, I want you to make a few comments. Something that you're really proud of, just one thing, because I know we... Okay.
Well, let's see. One thing I'm really proud of would be an outstanding staff and students and families that support the students at Mark Bills. Our, our big jump came in math. Our students with Ureca Math are finally, I think, catching on to the Calvin Core. So, only up from here is our plan, not our hope, our plan for this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you for exemplary leadership, Mrs. Rogers. Then, the next plaque is Hines, Mr. Durr, increase in math and reading, 5%, 5%.
I like that color also.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, few comments? I'll stand with you.
We were very excited that we did so well on Park this year and raised our score. We've got great teachers that work very hard every day, and this award really goes to them for all their hard work that they have done. And we have two of them back here tonight, two of our 4th grade teachers. So, great job.
Assistant Principal.
Yes, and Assistant Principal, Ms. Lisa Hooker, is also here tonight. Yes, and Assistant Principal, Ms. Lisa Hooker, is also here tonight.
And then, we have Woodrow Wilson, reading and math, 6.2% increase. Kudos to Mrs. Kelly Schuler, beautiful plaque, exemplary leadership. Would like to recognize you this evening.
What are you most proud of?
I'm most proud of our staff. I will be the spokesperson for Woodrow Wilson, but it is their dedication to the planning and the preparation and the relationships that they build with those kids each and every day that help these scores come to life. So, I did invite all of them tonight. Like Dr. Karat is reminding all of us, less stress, more success. In my world, family first. So, they're at home, getting some relaxation time, so they can be on that front line tomorrow and geared up and fully ready for those kids. So, thank you.
Great idea, and congratulations to Mrs. Schuler. She is a, one of those leader under 40, 40 under 40 leaders. That's an amazing recognition, so kudos to you. We're proud of you. Rolling Acres, oh, Mr. B, 7.2%, amazing, amazing, amazing. I know, I hear from your parents and your kids all the time. This is a handsome photo of you also.
It's also photoshopped. We just have, like other principals have said, we just have a really great team that really care about kids. They really work hard with each other to do what's best for kids and the best interest of kids, whether it's planning, teaching, and just going the extra mile to help support kids in whatever they need, whether it be academic or the social-emotional.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thomas Jefferson, 9.2%, that's amazing. That's pretty good. That's very, very good. Oh, she's here also.
Bring the baby up.
Come on, come on. She's grown. Cute picture also, very nice.
Hi. What are you proud of?
Well, I guess...
She's waving.
Leaving and coming back to her.
You can.
I would say with one of our teams in particular, the best thing is that they look at data, they challenge, not the system to bucket, but to do what is best for kids. They looked at, what was our kids struggling at? They read the data, they saw that there was a core issue, so they'd use that intervention time. They came, there's like, can we use that time to use this, you know, this is where our kids are struggling, this is what they need, and they met the needs of the kids. I want to say 20 points on math, I think, or something like that. It was pretty impressive. So, you know, they looked at the data, and I think that's fantastic.
She is so friendly. Let's see. Chatter Oak, wow, also very impressive, 12.3%.
Wow.
And actually, what we've done is, Ms. Rodriguez, is she here? Oh, she's outside. What about Ms. Zolkowski? Is Betty here also? So, anyway, we'll hold it. We're actually, since Ms. Zolkowski was the principal at Chatter Oak, we're saying, hey, you have your own plaque also. So, Ms. Rodriguez has something to work towards. She'll do it.
So, we'll put this on the side.
And last but not least, this is unbelievable, Lindberg, 17.6%, 17.6%. Mrs. Malahi, principal of Lindberg, this is unbelievable. Actually, what we've decided to do, what I would like to do for her staff, is come over and congratulate them and provide maybe breakfast or something. You let me know.
Mojo's.
I may be able to work something out, actually. And you know, I forgot to mention his wife. Dawn Robinson was an assistant principal for Peoria Public Schools for a long time. She was at Roosevelt. I was a mentor for her. I may be able to work something out. So, you've done a lot. I know you've done a lot. So, why don't you share some highlights, please?
Well, I also invited staff, and I was able to have a few of them who had time after our basketball game, so I've got them here, because they are definitely the key to our success.
Come on, friends.
We have worked... We've spent several years changing the culture at Lindberg to being one of academic achievement, a safe place to say, "I don't understand something," but then, the teachers take it a step further, and they get creative and make a way for them to find that time with students, to help the students feel comfortable and get that extra learning. The creativity and where they would find time is phenomenal, but they know the students, they know what they need, and they did an outstanding job. So, it truly, again, like all the others, was a team effort. We appreciate our students and families and everyone's support.
What do they do during lunch?
You name it. We've got lunch groups, we've got lunch budget, and again, the kids are initiating some of this, saying, "Hey, how can we get this extra time?" And when kids are coming, saying, "I noticed my scores are a little low in this area. How can we make that happen?" That really changes our perspective too, saying, "We've got to make it happen." And the teachers are so phenomenal in making sure that everybody gets what they need. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, thank you. While they're taking, having a picture taken, the next time around, you will see new leaders, new exemplary leaders, and definitely a lot more. We have amazing, you heard good, better, and exemplary, so we're looking forward to recognizing the rest of our principals with increased scores for the 17, 18 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And while we're getting ready, we have some district presentations about fall housing update.
Every year in the fall, September 30th is the benchmark date. All Illinois schools are supposed to report out on their enrollment by building and by district. And this year, we're at about 1370. We're, last year, we were at 1375, and the year before that, we were at 13161. Now, we've lost a few students. Today, we're standing at about 132. So, we're about 175 children behind where we were last year. And this, the demographic breakouts of our student body. And there are no real trends there. Everything's holding pretty steady. A little bit of an uptick in our Hispanic population and our percent low income over the three years, and we're probably averaging somewhere around a little bit under 70%. And that is it. Are there any questions? I kept, it was short.
Any questions of Dr.?
What about the ethnicity report? The ethnicity piece?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Ethnicity. Ethnicity.
Oh, the ethnicity? Okay.
Do you have that? Staff ethnicity. Staff ethnicity.
Oh, staff. Oh, I didn't...
That's okay, next.
It's in the one for tomorrow. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's good. We totally give it to you. That's good, Dr. T. Thank you.
All right, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I think I put pressure on. I know, it's short. So, Mr. Willis has to beat that time. The next one is a tax levy presentation. Mr. McKenzie.
All right, good evening, everybody. I guess I get to take his time, since he went so quickly. Tonight, we're going to talk about the tax levy process. Dr. Karat asked us to give an overview of the process. Some of you are new, and it just, it is kind of an odd process that if you've never done it before, parts of it don't really make a whole lot of sense. But, so here's the tax levy presentation, or the process is what we're going to be mainly talking about tonight. So, EAV, all of you, if you, when you pay your taxes, it's based on the EAV, which is the equalized assessed valuation, which is supposed to be 1/3 of the fair market value of your property. So, if you look at your EAV on your tax bill and you multiply that by 3, that should be about the fair market value of the property. There's lots of estimates that go into it, but what we care about is the total EAV for our district. The levy is the amount that we request the county to tax for us. So, it's, we ask for an amount, not for a rate. The tax rate is the amount per $100 of EAV that is paid on the property taxes, which is calculated. I'll show an example later. And the extension is the EAV times the tax rate to get to the amounts that we're likely to receive, minus some, you know, non-payment and things. So, the timeline or the dates, the important dates here. Next month, we'll do on the 13th, we need to do a report to you. We'll do the tax levy presentation on that day, but we have to officially do the estimates of revenues needed. You have to do that 20 days before the public hearing in December. So, 11/13 is the date. We'll have that for you, and that's when we'll give you the real numbers of what we would like you to pass in December for the tax levy. If the, step three, there's the publication of truth in taxation. If the levy that we're requesting is 105% of the previous year's extension, we have to do a very specific advertisement in the newspaper. It's got a black box around it. They kind of call it like a tombstone advertisement, because it can't be in the legal notices, it has to be. So, it's sort of expensive, so sometimes we do it whether we require it or not, but I don't like to spend money if we don't have to. So, we usually only do it the last couple of years if we are required to do it. So, that'll be, that has to be within seven days, or more than seven days, but less than 14 days from the time of the tax levy hearing, is when you have to publish size that. So, around the 1st of December. We'll have a hearing in the, on the December 11th, and then we will ask you to approve the tax levy on December 11th, because it has to be filed with the county clerk by the last Tuesday of December, which is December 26th this year. So, we'll file it right after the December 11th, but it has to be filed with the county clerk by December 26th. So, those are the dates. The planning process that we go through, we talk with the county assessor to get the EAV predictions. I talked to Dave Ryan last week with the Supervisor Assessments Office. He does a prediction. At this point, he's, based on the numbers he's having, he thinks our EAV is going to be flat from last year. He's still waiting for various things to go through the system, through the state, and through the various legal processes when people are contesting their EAV. So, that's, that won't be done until April. April 1st is usually when you find the final numbers, but right now, he's predicting about a 0% increase, about flat from last year. Nick Willis, Mr. Willis and I have been talking about project, the step two would develop scenarios. Some of these scenarios go into our budget, which, this is where timelines don't make a lot of sense. The levy's not due until December, but the numbers have to do with our budget, which we did in August. So, we have numbers that we are already planning on presenting to you, but we've been still kind of developing the different scenarios. And then, the step three, there are determined levels of need for restricted funds. That's things like our bond levy. I, every year, I compare numbers with Gabe McLeed over in the county office to make sure that they're planning on levying the same amount I expect for the bonds that we have to pay and different things. I'll show you an example here in a second. And then, step four, obviously, is to take it to you for discussion, which will be next month and in December. This is just our budget from this year, the revenue portion of our budget without the on-behalf payments. The $72 million that you see there in blue is the property tax levy. It makes up almost 40% of our revenue budget, so it's a big part of it. State revenues, the $53 million is general state aid, so state, and this is where we differ from a lot of school districts, where a lot of our revenue is from state and federal sources. But, obviously, property taxes is still our biggest source of funds. So, when we talk about the levy process, you have to be really careful, because if you make a mistake and you levy the wrong amount, it has a big impact on things. So, there have been school districts, like over in Bloomington, where they made large errors, and so we go over this multiple times and make sure we have all the numbers correct. So, that's just our, this current year budget. Here's our EAVs over the last several years. 2010 was our highest EAV ever in the district. It was just over $1.4 billion, which is kind of hard to believe, but, and then it fell in 2011 by a little over 2%, and 2012 by 2%, and 2013 by a little over 2%. And then, it's started creeping up this year, or the last few years. And in 2016, we reached about the same level as 2011, and like I said a few minutes ago, 2017, we're estimating at this point to be about the same as 2016. So, the EAVs have started getting out, but they still haven't reached our historically high numbers in 2010. Here's the last year's tax levy, and if you look in this max rate line, or column, some of our, some of our levies, like the education fund levy, is restricted by a rate of 2.18%. And so, we cannot go over 2.18% unless we had a referendum. So, and we try to keep it at that 2.18%. Other levies, like TORT and IMRF Social Security, and our bonds and lease payments with the PBC, those are unlimited levies. We can levy as much as we need for our purpose of the organization, but there's very, there's restricted things that can be charged to those areas. So, anyway, so that's, and so in the process where I say it's backwards, is what we will be asking you to approve is the levy, which is this column. It's yellow here. And you can see that the levy was 30 million, 105, and the calculated rate with that levy would have been 2.19. Well, our max rate is 2.18, so the county only taxed 2.18. So, it's kind of a backwards process, where we're going to ask for a dollar amount. We have to ask more than we expect in that line, so that if EAV estimates aren't correct, or aren't, you know, completely accurate, we will still end up at that 2.18. So, that's the kind of the process and the thing. And then, we have to, Nick and I have been talking about different scenarios, about IMRF and Social Security and TORT and different things to make sure. And like I said, the county and I have already confirmed these dollar amounts with the bonds and PBC leases, because they will levy for bonds, even if we were to close, they would levy, you know, to pay bonds until they're, and pay those bonds for us. If something catastrophic happened... if something catastrophic happened. Obviously, that's just not going to happen, but regardless. And then we will give the estimates for this levy number at the November 13th meeting. All right, new this year is the county school facility sales tax bonds. We issued bonds in May, $27 million of bonds. Those bonds have a property tax, general obligation, backup levy. So the intention, and, you know, we will always set aside the money from the sales tax to pay those bonds every year. But the county has to, we have to tell the county every year not to back up levy for those new bonds. So this year, we're going to have a new resolution that you'll have to pass where we abate the county levy, and then we will transfer the money to pay the county school facility sales tax bonds from the Capital Projects Fund 61 to the Net Service Fund. So it's a new couple of resolutions we'll have this year that we've never had to do before. But we will have to do that every year for the next 20 years. So it just, this will be the first year we've ever done it. So that's new this year. And then that's all I have. I can go longer if Dr. T didn't take his time, so.
Any questions of Mr. McKenzie? Board questions? Mr. Walther?
Just one question. We have been authorized to get some Q-bonds. Is that incorporated in there yet?
No, no, no. The QZB bonds will do, we'll probably be talking about doing some life safety bonds to pay out of those funds, but that'll be a separate thing from the actual tax levy. And then paying them back, if we do life safety, paying them back will be through future levies.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all you have to ask? Any other questions? Thank you. Next one is, report stadium overview.
While the PowerPoint's coming up, and there it is. We've been working with APSCO students on Peoria Stadium Sign. The Peoria Stadium Sign Project is actually part of their educational programming and gives us a way to help them learn, but also raise funds for the stadium to generate revenue. And we're running this whole project through the, as far as our connection with the city, through the intergovernmental agreement process, which means we have a public hearing on it, which occurred about a week ago. We put it on our agenda for approval, which we have it on for tonight. And once we, and as long as it's connected to the educational process and we have a hearing and have it on the agenda, then we're good to go. So that's kind of the process. And here, what you have is War Memorial, and at the top part of the screen, you basically have where the sign will go. It's the little triangle, and that gives you a little blow-up of the triangle that kind of illustrates to you the landscaping and that kind of thing that'll be part of that signage. This is just a mock-up of the sign coming from a couple of directions. This is eastbound on War Memorial. That's westbound on War Memorial. And I really just wanted to give you a sense of what it was we will be asking you to approve later on in the agenda. So this is kind of a quick drive-by, if you will.
Any questions? So the top part will come off, and this will be the new sign?
No, it's the top.
No, the, the sign will actually, actually wraps around the existing. If you look back at, do you see the V on this illustration? The existing sign is actually in the middle of that V. And so the, there's an electronic board with a wall surrounding it on, there's two.
Okay.
And so, and they are built into that V.
I was just thinking, I would could make that sign look a little better. The old.
Oh.
This will probably be better.
Yeah. We have been looking into some facelifting techniques as far as the sign is concerned, and that'll continue to be under study. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I really just wanted to give you a sense of what it is you'll be approving tonight.
All right. Not the old sign. Questions? Comments? Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
First of all, I, as a person that, that is so proud of our system, have always been, because I went all the way through this District 150. But there's something I think we all need to concentrate on as we go through this process. This is being done about, with our students. Our students have done most all of the work on this. And as I left the meeting the other night, I got home and I said to my husband, "Everybody talks about the kids that get in trouble, that 1%. We never talk about our children that do wonderful things." So I just encourage, not only the people in this audience, but I encourage the people that are listening. When you see about the meetings with buildings and grounds, you need to come to the meetings. The students handle the entire meeting. They explain things, they talk about what they're doing and how they're doing it. And with the help of the advisors that are with them, I want you to know you can be very proud of what our children are doing. So I would just encourage you to, whenever you see there's a meeting with buildings and grounds, we're going to be talking about this wonderful stadium. You need to come and see them at work because you will be amazed at what 99% of our kids are doing in this district.
Thank you. All right. No other comments or questions? The Program Budget Committee, update.
Carla, I think, will take the lead on that.
All right, thank you.
And I'll cheer the emails if you.
I think Carla only invites me so I can forward her slides.
Yes. I, I need some assistance there.
Okay, good evening. We're here to give a short update on the Program Budget Committee. Do you need to move us forward? So tonight, what we're going to do, I thought it was important to go back and kind of recap the Phase Two, kind of what we're up to this year as far as the transportation savings area and the professional learning communities that we call PLCs. And then also then to look forward to the start of Phase Three, which is for FY '19 and beyond implementation, kind of identifying the components and timelines. And, you know, as we look at that area, we just really, we sat down as a group of administrators, and we just struggled a little bit to get going this year. Other years, it was more of a cut and dry. You go through and you might look at Compass, or you might look at Elite. You would go down the listing of all the programs, and we found it relatively easy to find that list, to go through it. You determine with data, you determine, you know, what programs are working, what isn't. But with this, we found that it was a more complex grouping, and you'll see that as we go on. But first, we'll go through that and recap Phase Two. And we'll have Josh go ahead, kind of just give the highlights of what's going on here. We have the following slide, just to remind him as well, that's more on that stop arm, but to at least kind of go through where we're at right now.
All right, good evening. Just to recap, again, last year, we had initially started talking about a three-tier bus system, and we initially tabled that. We also looked at establishing, or worked to establish, a Transportation efficiencies committee. Again, as it says there, we're going to address the stakeholders, questions, concerns. I know that there was a public survey that was done to gather information, and all of this was ongoing, just to get some feedback from the community when approaching three-tier. The other things that we, we settled upon doing was to align the high school schedules, to implement the efficient Woodruff transportation, and to look at the mid-days that were transporting the students back and forth between their home high schools and Woodruff. We also looked at pursuing stop-arm program, not only for revenue, but also to improve safety. So if we can improve safety, and as a side note, potentially generate some revenue, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go for that. Also, to shift the school lunch deliveries from the Transportation Department back to food services. We also, for the first time, implemented a voluntarily, or a volunteer opt-out for parents. So when they go through the registration, they can opt-out of transportation if they don't want it. And then also, we looked at other areas where we could reduce mileage. One of the areas to reduce mileage was to reduce how deeply the high school routes go into neighborhoods, middle school routes, things like that, for some mileage reduction. And just to give a update, last year, when we were speaking about this, we were running about 119 routes, plus about 25 Woodruff routes. So far this year, we're running 100 routes. So we cut 19 routes from last year. Routes, if you figure a route between $35,000 and $40,000 per route, that should show quite a bit of savings from, from last year. In addition to that, the Woodruff mid-days, we were running about 25, 26 Woodruff mid-days. We're now running Woodruff on six. So quite a few reductions we were able to get when several things kind of came together there to yield quite a bit of savings. To give an update on the stop-arm program, we're still working on this. We've kind of been looking at the offers given by the company that we were initially looking at. Unfortunately, the company that initially gave us the proposal in the split is no longer in business. The company was purchased by one of the members of the, of the company. So it's kind of re-envisioned, so the ownership has changed. With the new ownership, they're less gung-ho with putting stop-arm violation cameras on the entire fleet. They want to start more conservatively, which is why I think it changed hands. So looking at a reduction in the number of vehicles that they're being installed on, we're looking at seeing probably revenues in the $100,000 range, and that's first year. But again, we're still kind of in that, working through all the legalities and everything surrounding that to make sure that, that we're fully compliant there.
Okay, then with the professional learning communities, again, this is where we are in the current year. We went ahead and kind of realigned for primary and middle school. If you remember, we went through each school and determined to level it off that two times per week would be PLCs at the primary level, and then three times a week for the middle school level. And this saved a little over $300,000. Then we decided to table the high school PLC schedule for further study. That was requested by the group, and that is exactly what we did. And we're looking at that again, of course, this year. So now we're into Phase Three. So we have the Transportation efficiencies improvement committee. And the idea was to include staff, parents, board members, anybody that we felt needed to be a piece of this so we could kind of further explore those pros and cons of what we had come up with for that three-tier. But also just to look at other areas and just see about the, you know, the sufficient distribution, perhaps even charging fees for some of the riders, special programs. And then again, coming back to that three-tier, or some reconfiguration within the two-tier. The committee members are kind of, that's what we struggled with it as I started the conversation tonight, on who all needed to be in and when. It just took us a while to really focus in on what we had to do first. And we do have a slide that really shows that. But we did start with our organization. I'd call it kind of an organizational committee meetings. And the next step now is I just sent out the invitation to union leadership. And then we want to get a very few parent representatives right on the committee. We do have plans then to take it out in another way. But for now, this is kind of our group, including Josh, of course, the three AIOs, myself, trying to just get, you know, the curriculum, trying to get all the different perspectives on it along with our union and parent reps then. The meetings look as follows up on the screen there. We're just kind of getting started now. We want it to kind of blossom out into December, which is when we hope to have more information by that date. So we're kind of bringing it into that time. And again, in the future slides, you'll kind of see how it all comes around. So the PLC Subcommittee purpose is then to re-envision the PLC times for the high schools, remembering again that we did the elementary and middle last year, but kind of seeing what impact there would be on the elementary and middle schools as well this year. And then the committee members, we brought in three principals, as well as AIOs. And then again, we're looking for union leadership and parent reps for that as well. And these are the meetings laid out to this point. The reason for the shorter time span there, we wanted to have some kind of tentative options that we could present to the board, so you'd have some kind of a feel of what we're looking at and what the other choices would be. That what we have right now is very much a Cadillac plan that would be hard to maintain, so we're kind of looking at other ideas. And just wanted to get it out in the public as soon as we could. So this is the slide I was saying where there's just so many pieces to it. And it just took us a while to get through it, to figure out, you know, what, what months, and when did we need to get things done. So you have your PLC that has to be hit hard in October, November. Then we have the Davis demographic study that will be coming back. Perhaps we'll have some information in November, but we should have a full report in December for the board. And then we want the two- and three-tiered bell schedule to continue between this November-January time, kind of looking at those grade level start times, again, same kind of period of time. And then the balance calendar, not sure quite how that works in yet. That's a little bit of a longer time span, but again, just trying to put it out there that we do have a group looking at that. Board update in December, as I said, for the Davis demographics. And then staff and community forums, we're looking at, we're starting in January to get input. We thought that was really great during the reconfiguration time. We kind of took it out to the buildings. Chris and I had done some of that, Josh and I had done some of that. It was just a really good way to get that broad spectrum of parent input. When we're talking about our committees, well, it can only be a very few people. It just really bogs down if you make those just super huge groups. We try to keep it limited, but at the same time, we do take parent input seriously, as was seen last year. And so we want to go out and really spread the word. But at this point, we just realized that all these components come together, and it just took some time as a group of administrators to figure out so then which part comes first. We don't want to put kind of the cart before the horse, I guess. And we wanted to get it in the right order. So we feel like a lot of the transportation does rest on the demographic study, that we don't want to put families, parents, children through changes multiple times. We're hoping to have this all come together, and then we're going to know what needs to come first or what adjustment is going to impact another one. Josh has been great on that of every time we say, "Well, you know, we might do this program change, or what if we were to move this boundary?" That then he, you know, points out with that would impact the transportation costs as well. So we have to kind of look at all pieces, and that's why it's been kind of, you know, just a bit slower startup this time, but I think we're ready to get off and running now. This is an example of how we're kind of envisioning the parent forums to be, kind of like the hot topics. So for example, right now, we know this is going to grow and change, but just for this moment in time, we knew that childcare topics, that was really, really important this last, you know, spring. Extracurricular activities, sports, that's another area. And then research on the school start times is, we had our small group that had done a lot of research or had, you know, looked into the research and were really concerned about high school age needing to start later, regardless of those other components, that they'd really, really focused on that. So it should be some really interesting conversations that we plan to bring out to the schools, and I'm sure it may grow from there. So final implementation would be to utilize the staff and community forum feedback. Definitely bring the union in at this point. They haven't been at our meetings, but we want to have everybody included. Kind of determine what components can be implemented in the fall of 2018, and which components are going to need further study and planning. And then fall 2018 implementation must be approved by the board by very early spring in order to move forward for the items that we can do at that time. Questions?
Any questions? Comment? Mr. Walther?
Just more of a comment, just as one board member. I'm appreciative that you're taking this time to go through that and get that kind of impact. It has, I think what we're talking about could be a significant change for parents and for students. And I think doing this a little bit slow and steady, I appreciate that. I think we, you know, getting this input in works for us instead of... I think we, you know, getting this input in works for us instead of having to rush to a decision, then all of a sudden find out later that a piece of it didn't work. So I just want to thank you for the work you guys are putting in this.
Any other questions?
Comments or questions? Mr. Atlin?
Thank you. Yeah, I also appreciate the process overview because it helps frame, I guess, our thinking going forward. I was going to ask if, related to the three-tiered transportation proposal, is there, obviously we heard a lot of feedback in the spring about how that would impact parents, particularly, do we, have we seen any, I guess, silver bullets or, you know, good leads, I guess, in terms of resolving some of those kind of core issues that were presented in that survey feedback?
I have to answer honestly right now, not yet, we're just getting ready to delve into the areas like the childcare, et cetera, delve into those areas, and we have to weigh all the areas. We have to decide, is that the most important way to go, or is that an area that has to be tackled, or can we, as you asked last year, can you tackle it other ways? But in the end, we have broken down buses galore, we have things that we need to purchase and buy, and as we've said before, it's not a matter of coming down to that zero, we got to come out to the good. We have things that we need to take care of, and if the buses aren't going to move the children around the city, we have a problem.
I will just state as an individual board member, if I look at the three-tier proposal, and one benefit is transportation efficiency, and another benefit is the opportunity to tweak the start times and better align them with what the kids need. I want those better start times. I would gladly abandon that third tier to get better aligned start times. So absent, absent, you know, a good, hearty solution to kind of resolve those parent and family concerns, that's where I'm at. So I just want to put that out there, because no matter how small we make this, this is a big change. So, just my two cents.
Other comments?
Josh?
Ms. Sherman?
I just have a question. You mentioned that you're considering charges for certain types of riders. What were those special circumstances for those students who are using the buses more that are going to get charged? I was a little confused.
I think it wasn't, I'll let Josh finish off the statement, but I think it was just any special programs that we would have to question that you might add on. For example, say if the Saturday University, we could pick on that one, if it wasn't funded by Title I, would it make more sense to simply say the parents would have to bring the children going forth? And that money that we chose to spend, it was a decision we made, that it could have been spent on something else rather than transporting the children. And so we have to consider, any special program like that, is transportation included?
Would that include the Woodruff Technical Center? Because I know those students have additional busing to normal high school.
And Josh can fill in on that as far as the.
I think the fees are really focused in on the AMPM transport from home to school, school to home. The transportation with Woodruff, we didn't look at that as far as paying for transport because it's really integral into the success of the vocational program. Really what we were looking at is out-of-attendance-area transports, so any students in, say, the pure high attendance area, but are attending rich woods on a program or something, which puts that student outside of their general attendance area. I think those were the areas we were looking most at charging fees and things for, as far as transportation is concerned.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments? I just have, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I think you said that you wanted to, you were going to invite the community to one of the committee meetings, and you said that hasn't happened yet? Just wondering if, when that would happen?
Well, what we're saying for those official public forums, if you mean that, that would be January, and then if you mean as far as coming to the individual meetings, we are working on that through the, and I'm going to say the wrong name, the PTO.
Council.
Council.
Thank you.
I just want to make an observation or ask, really kind of make a point, that transportation has always been one of our better funds, so to speak. And we have less children now than we had, say, 10 years ago, and I believe it was around that time when we had a really healthy transportation fund. And it was requested that we were, use some new technical kinds of things to move some money out of transportation into some of the others, like Ed Fund and that, and that was granted. But my, I guess I'm trying to see what has changed so much so now than it was before, because we had, I mean, the fund has always been able to take care of itself and take care of the kids that we, you know, that we have, and now I don't know what, I guess I'm kind of missing, what could have happened?
Well, what it mainly is, is proration came, and we don't get the full amount that we should be getting, and either Josh or Mike Mackenzie could explain it.
That's primarily it. The same years that we were getting prorated on general state aid, we also were getting prorated on transportation, and those numbers were significant. Last year, the proration reduction was about $700,000. And so we were being prorated in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $700,000, let's say, sometimes more. That's occurred over the last, like, seven or eight years.
Right. I realize that. But I was, the reason I was asking, because back then, when we ran, we said we were running the risk of taking the money out of that fund, then they would say, well, we didn't really need it, and they were going to lower our amount some kind of way. I don't know if they did that or not. That was.
We didn't do that.
But it was basically.
Proration wasn't done.
No, you weren't here. That's the reason I'm bringing it up, because you weren't here. It wasn't something you did.
If you take $700,000.
If you take $700,000, seven years, that's $5 million. That's it. Yeah.
I just was looking for an explanation for those who have been here for a while.
And President Ross, I think Mary had a, Mary Sherman, as I was sitting in board member, had a great question. And just one thing to add to what Carla and Josh said, those are all exploratory.
Thank you. No other questions?
Just on the balanced calendar, what is the primary driver behind that?
That would be the health of our students and academic improvement, but that would be something more for Dr. Karat to answer.
Okay. And I figured she might want to, the second part of the question is, what has been the impact academically on other districts that have implemented and that have gone from our calendar to the balanced?
We do have one school that's on balanced calendar now.
Right, actually two.
Two, okay.
Came on this year, and Dr. Wilson can assist with that because she's actually sharing, chairing that committee. It's actually a piece, board members show of our strategic plan in terms of.
Year-round school.
Year-round school and unique calendaring. There are quite a bit of pros and actually some cons, but some benefits, and that will be all part of this committee's work. I'm really looking forward to hearing their recommendation to the board and myself. Some of you ask, what were some of the pros? Some people would say that, I mean, research has shown that, and you have that even distribution, right? So you don't have that uneven, unevenness, like being out for like 11, 12 weeks during the summer, for example. Thus, you hear a lot about summer slide. It's, it seems to be a much more balanced approach, based on the research. It fits nicely with our theme of more success, less stress, because, you know, you get those equal, those equal intervals in terms of breaks, so by the time staff and students, you know, they've sort of maybe had it, it's like time to just take a break, and Valeska, for example,'s schedule is 45 days in, 15 out, and Knoxville's also following the same schedule. Rock Island has an interesting story to tell, we will hear about it. They'll tell you, really primarily, it's increased the culture and climate of that school. So hopefully, you know, the hypothesis is, if this schedule is implemented, either district-wide or in some areas, some regions, you might augment student achievement and, in the meanwhile, also improve the culture and climate and have sort of a nice environment, you know, sweet spot where the adults are not too stressed out and the kids are. And then there are a number of things that can happen during the intercession, for example, acceleration, I mean, it's, so it lends itself to some creativity, but we'll see what happens, so what this committee brings forth. Do you want to add anything to that, Dr. Wilson?
We're ready to get started with our impact, to gather feedback from stakeholders.
And there are five groups? They are, you going to repeat them again, please?
Yeah, well, you read them.
Yeah.
Yes, you did.
Yes. Athletic and extracurricular activities, staffing, collective bargaining, and human resources, building and grounds, community activities and family life, and students' academic life and achievements, so.
I know we got a lot of feedback also from the community while we were talking about the county's facility sales tax. A lot of them were really excited about helping with the HVAC at 50% of our schools that are not air-conditioned, because we heard time and time again, the possibility of, you know, they said year-round schools.
And I think in addition to this, as Dr. Karat alluded to, there's one district that she refers to, but we also have a body of research that we will also share with our findings, and so lessons learned, case studies, and so we'll include that as part of our paper, of course, so that we can see not just what's happening to one school, district in the state of Illinois, but what research has said has shown over time. So we'll include that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions, comments? Okay, last one, Substitute Teacher Committee Report. Who do we have?
Dr. Ike.
Dr. Ike, come on down.
Don't look at her.
Dr. Torijigian set the stage.
She gets pressure from us.
That's okay, Dr. Ike, no pressure. Take your time.
Every presentation has always been rushed, but we're good.
Take your time.
Good evening, President Ross, members of the board, Dr. Karat. We're here this evening, members of the Substitute Teacher Committee, to present some recommendations to, we've been meeting for about a couple of months now, and I know that down the road, there's a list of the Substitute Committee members, but I do want them to just stand when I call your name. Dr. Jerry Bell. Mr., glasses. Coach Derek Booth. Thank you. Chris Copeland. Susan Drosnich, I haven't seen her. She's, okay, very well. Ms. Zoe Hammer. Thank you very much. We're going to be quick here. So you all have copies of the PowerPoint at your stations, so you can follow along, but this is the area we're going to cover today. Basically, that substitute teachers, the need for them has grown, continues to grow. Up until the last five years, it's always been needed just for teacher, occasional teacher absences, which varied, or you can categorize them like illness and professional development, FMLA, et cetera. I cited the source there because in my former district, we did take some time to study it, and this is just typical, I mean, no matter which district you study, this is about what you're going to find. The second one, school districts are taking steps to make sure that they reduce doing PTE during the daytime so that they can maximize teacher time. But lately, of course, the teacher shortage problem is wearing its ugly head, and so not only are we needing teachers to just sub for occasional teacher absence, but we're also needing them to sub in long-term positions. And when you have them in long-term positions, they're not available for those occasional times. On a daily basis, Peoria Public Schools utilizes about 41 substitute teachers to cover daily absences. If you take the percentage of just classroom positions, it's about 5.9%. Obviously, if you take that percentage of the entire certified staff, it's a little bit lower. And on any given day, about 11.6 FTEs of the 41 that we staff go unfilled. And when that happens, of course, buildings begin to scramble and begin to find ways, creative ways, I call it, we called it, contractually sound ways, and I look back over there when I say contractually sound, of covering instruction. In addition to the daily absences, I think I talked about this before, that we're grappling with about 44 vacancies, where you have substitute teachers locked away. Now, so that means that for Peoria's average daily need of 85 substitutes, and you see the combination there, 41 absences plus 44 vacancies, you have 85. So there needs to be an available substitute teacher pool, or about 425. That basically takes into account the algorithm that you need about five subs for each vacancy, or each absence or vacancy. In the old days, when we used to call them by phone, the experience was that for one big vacancy, you'd call approximately five subs in order to get one. Obviously, these days, we've resorted to internet, the ASOP system, and so, you know, you can't quite tell anymore, because people are seeing the vacancies and moving forward from there. So, right now, the district has about 224 in the pool, and that's after we went through, Ms. Hammer's team went through and just combed and dislodged all those that are on the list that are not subbing. They contacted each of them and said, are you still willing, ready, and able? And those who said yes got put back, and those who said no were purged from the system. So we are at a deficit right now. 224 is, of course, 201 subs short of the ideal pool size. So part of the recommendation you're going to see tonight is an effort to begin to grow that pool as much as possible. Okay, I think I talked about this before, in terms of needing five because some decline. Lastly, the pay rate for subs was also considered by the committee, by taking a survey of surrounding school districts, and we found that we were pretty much all competitive, except for one district. I'm not going to mention it, so I don't want to give them free ad. And so part of the recommendation, part of what we took into account in making these recommendations is looking at the competitive rates that are being paid to, by certain districts. And these are the names that we, that I mentioned before, those were certainly in the committee. It was a wonderful brainstorming session. All right, committee charge. We were charged by Dr. K, Dr. Karat, two things. She will study the substitute teacher process and. She studied the substitute teacher process and developed recommendations that would ensure full coverage of certified absences each school day, regardless of whether the absence was occasioned by vacancies or teacher absences. So she goes, "I don't want to see any classroom uncovered on any given day. I don't care how you guys do it, that's the recommendation that I'm looking for." And so the committee went to work, and here are the things that they came up with. Number one, increase the pay for sub-teachers for short-term assignments from one-hundred to one-thirty per day. And then for long term, a boost from one-twenty to one-eighty. Again, remember, we did surveys around the school districts and came up with that. We also recommended that we identify certain schools where we would station long-term subs. And by the way, I'm being careful and deliberate in using the word "long-term subs" as opposed to quote-unquote "permanent subs." In talking with our union leadership, we wanted to make sure that we don't confuse anybody, any bargaining unit, by using the word "permanent." So the word is "long-term," and that's because we currently have long-term subs serving in vacancies. Day treatment, Harrison, Lincoln, Manuel, Peoria High, Roosevelt, and Sterling, we will recommend any combination of two to three, but not to exceed fifteen district-wide. And of course, additional recommendations, we're advertising widely, and you all should have at your desk, and I think at the entrance today, a new substitute ad that the committee put together, and Mr. Copeland kind of went to work and made it look wonderful. So we are beginning to circulate it. If you need copies, let us know, we'll produce as many as you need to go to community events, go to your neighbors. Ms. Opoff has been very, very instrumental recommending people to us, and now that we've finalized this flyer, I'm going to ship her a few bundles so that she can travel with them. Update our substitute teacher handbook with requirements, processes, and content. And actively recruit retirees through intentional recruitment sessions by the superintendent and myself, which I've actually done before by, as certified teachers are retiring, the superintendent of my former district would go and court them and have an evening social with them and then beg them to come back. So, Doc, I'll be calling on you from time to time to do that. To develop rapport with current subs through PD, support and occasional social events, encourage building admin centers to continue to build rapport with their substitutes. Basically, roll out the charm offensive, we call it. Communicate with current teachers about the benefits of taking fewer sick days, if at all possible. We don't want you to come to work if you're really ill. But we know that also the message that went out in the other district was that you could really cash in on that when it's time for you to leave. So get that message out there. And then to continue to analyze the data on ASOP to determine patterns of use and utilization. The curriculum folks talked about this in item ten. They wanted us to provide enhanced instructional content for, bless you, for hired subs through curriculum and instruction. And they're doing it now. They have scheduled eight sessions of professional development. So as we're hiring new subs, they're giving them instructional, they're giving them PD in terms of classroom management, planning and preparation, et cetera, the whole deal. Very unique suggestion, find out where subs live and then market certain pieces of information to them. And then serve the subs to find out why they choose certain buildings. If you know that, again, marketing, you can tailor your information. I think we've talked about this before, be sure sub packets are provided in every classroom or every building to help them guide their work. And find out how special or private arrangement for sub coverage affects the ASOP system. This came up because sometimes there'll be a vacancy, but schools have relationships with certain subs. They simply get on the phone and call them rather than let them get on the line to claim positions. So we need to see how that is affecting the way ASOP operates so that it does not leave the system unworkable. In other words, you don't want to either double, double, double claim a position or result in the eleven-point-six that go unclaimed every day. And instead, to conduct an experiment by sampling some schools to find out more about substitute behaviors, choices, et cetera, and then tweak the process if we need to. Lastly, be sure that ASOP is user-friendly. And the HR team, Jerry's team, is hard at work every day doing that. In fact, when subs come in, they take them to that station next to HR and walk them through the process. So in doing so, they find out what types of questions subs are asking so that they can provide feedback to ASOP down the road. Discussion, the general goal of this exercise was to reduce daily unfilled absences by ten percent, from eleven-point-six to ten-point-five. I mean, we hope to exceed that, but we don't want to be overly ambitious. And then also to increase the pool of active subs by five percent, from two-twenty-four to two-thirty-five, but that's still short of the four-twenty-five, I believe we said, And so the rate increases for subs are reflected on the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen salaries and regulations for the personnel sheet, which is on the BOE agenda for tonight, the Blue Book item ten on the concerned agenda. And with that, the substitute teacher committee wraps it up and will take your questions.
Questions from board members. Dr. Incaj. Mr. Waltham.
I have a question for you in regards to the, on recommendation D, committee recommendations, increase the pay from subs to one-hundred to one-thirty, one-twenty to one-eighty, that page.
Yes.
And then you said, recommended to have two to three subs stationed there for a total, not more than fifteen district-wide. Am I reading for that, that those were, in essence, be permanent subs in that area?
We're using long-term subs.
Okay, long-term, I'm using the phrase "long-term subs."
Right.
The reason I ask that is that I know New York City and Chicago has a pool of long-term subs that are available, and that if by chance all those things were not filled, whereas the sub opening, they would still get paid, that would be optimal. I don't see that happening. But is that what the intent is of this?
That's the intent, yeah, that's the intent of it, right. And as you know, again, eleven or so positions, so openings go unfilled every day. So we're basically counting on that, that between eleven and fifteen, you should be able to, I mean, it's an average, so some days it's even more than eleven. There was a time we even had like twenty positions unfilled. So we want to be able to make sure that if any classroom is going to go unfilled, that it's only a handful, one, two unfilled.
I'm speaking in support of the committee recommendations. I think you've done a lot of work, and I agree with this. I'll be honest, I'm not so sure fifteen district-wide is enough. But, you know, I'm going to support the committee's recommendation, but if you take a look at the numbers that you've given us, you know, when you've got forty-some positions already available, you need a minimum forty-one a day. I'm not so sure that this may not be an incentive for some people to come in and do that, knowing that they would be, and the guarantee is, you know, we're going to have a spot for you. It may not be, we can't guarantee that spot, but you're going to be here. Or if you're doing this, allocating to a certain school, or you're just going to have it a pool.
Good point, and we can adjust that also. That's a very good point.
Yeah, and we actually discussed that in our committee, right? Guys, did I leave out anything?
Just to be clear, fifteen are on top of the forty-one long-term subs that are already in place.
Okay, why isn't clear that? Could you repeat that, please?
The fifteen...
The fifteen long-term subs stationed at the locations that we listed are in addition to the forty-one long-term subs that are already filling those open positions.
Okay, but they're both going to get paid at that rate?
Correct.
Okay, fine.
Ms. Sherman?
You mentioned that we're already competitive on our substitute salaries, so with this increase, would that put us above that other unnamed district? Or...
Thank you for not mentioning this, for not asking me for that. We're still below by a tad, but highly competitive with all the others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Just from Mr. Copeland, can we have an electronic copy? I would like to spread. Thank you.
And since you brought that up, you want to talk about who did the flyer? Who donated the...
Yes, we have an executive on loan from Caterpillar in the person of Ms. Sonia Miles, who's been very, very instrumental in helping us out with anything that we need. So we've, I hate to use the word "taking advantage of her," but we've taken advantage of that opportunity. And the flyer was one project that she either did or had her interns do, gave it to us to react to. Jerry and her team tweaked it, added some other pieces of information. I designed the back part of it for, in terms of how you get the qualifications, how you get hired, et cetera. And then I turned it over to Chris Copeland, who then did his magic. So it's a cooperative effort by so many people to get it to where it is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson. Oh, I didn't see your hand. Ms. Jackson has it.
I'm real quiet. I'm looking at the substitute license process.
Yes.
How long does it take from the time someone applies and do the necessary things it needs to get their license to be a substitute teacher?
I will tell you anywhere from two to seven days on average. Now, the average is kind of elastic. It all depends also on where you're coming from, where your transcript is coming from, et cetera. So when you apply, they have to look at you, do a transcript evaluation, make sure that you do have a bachelor's degree, and any verification they have to do in that process. So two to seven days is what you will hear.
Okay. And if I were a teacher, and I hadn't taught in ten years, but could I come in without going through that whole process, or do I have to...
You would have to come through...
I'm destroying the opening.
But if you've been a teacher, though, it would be an easy process to get re-upped again into teaching. So even as a sub, or even coming back into the fold.
Dr. Ike, the question was, for the listening audience, what are the hours for substitute?
The work hours at whichever building that you're subbing in will be the work hours for, so what, six and a half to seven hours a day if you're a long-term sub. Of course, sometimes subs are needed for half a day, depending on what the need is. If it's an IEP session day, then the sub will have to have a day, in which case the ASOP will clearly identify that it is a half a day or a full day. So the thing to do is, once you follow the process for getting registered, then get your sign on and run to that ASOP and just claim, 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 because we now pay a whole lot more than we used to. We're the best deal in town now.
Yeah. When I was a principal, individuals would have to call me and say, "I'm not going to be able to come in today." And I...
You don't do that.
Mr. Atkins Dutroux is here in the audience, and at our last meeting when we met last week, they brought it up and recommended it, and I thought it was a great idea. We were going to pilot that. Where are we with that idea?
That will be rolled out and followed memo to principals before the week is out, actually, so that they'll pass that along to, either hand the memo over or simply talk to your staff at a faculty meeting. Yes, ma'am.
And I know everybody would like to know, how long does it take? Once you apply and you start the background check and all those things that go with it, how long does it take to go from the background check, get all the things done, to come on board? And I know approximately, but I think we ought to say it so people will know that timeline.
I appreciate you asking that question. Once you get to the point of being approved to be a substitute teacher, the next step is simply come in for background screening. And the minute you give us your fingerprints, depending on how urgent, urgently we need you in the classroom, you can be in the classroom as soon as the next day, if not the same day, depending on how quickly you can get it done. But then, of course, you have to go to I-Work where we do the health screening as soon as possible. But the fingerprinting is the sine qua non, the most critical part that we're bound by statute to make sure that you do that. So, yeah, it can be as soon as the next day, soon as, maybe after you give us your fingerprints.
Mr. Waltham.
I was just going to say, having been someone who's gone through this process, nothing. But anyway, knowing that it does take, it's going to take at least seven days. I mean, two to seven, two's optimal, but seven is more realistic, Ms. Jackson, to go through that, just because it's just getting a time up to go with I-Work and to get the fingerprinting and to get everything done. And that's assuming you don't have to get transcripts back. Illinois State, right now, you can't get transcripts by phone. You can do them over the Internet, but if you do them over the Internet, it takes five to seven days by doing them with that. Or you can do what I did, which is drive down to my old alma mater and do it in person, and then you get them in one to two days. But I don't know what the policy is at other colleges, it's just that there's an issue that goes with that. So seven's a good thing, but I think you're looking at probably seven to ten business days. But you're right, once you get to that point where you can do the thumb on the thing, and you're probably ready to go the next day and stuff.
Correct. What we found is that there is that, some people that come in, they call, get information by phone, but now they'll have it on the back of the flyer anyway. They start early preparing, they start rolling transcripts and things of that nature, so that by the time they really get good and ready to come, their stuff is already far, really far along, so, which is a good thing for us because that means that kids will not go too long without coverage. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions related to this goal. Recognizing that all of us have our First Amendment rights to free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we cannot, not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person, each speaker has five minutes, and no one under age eighteen may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, teacher, or guardian, without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Jennifer Champion Freiberg. Did I say that right?
Close enough.
I did.
Since I have to introduce myself, I can do it for you.
Since I have to introduce myself, I can do it for you. My name's Dr. Jennifer Champion Freiberg. I am the parent of two children in District 150, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about concerns centered on the newly passed grading policy that you all approved in August of this year. Recognizing that change takes time, I know it was just implemented in August, and when I saw the policy initially, I was concerned about it, but wanted to give it the first nine weeks of the school district to see how our schools term, to see how it worked out with my children, and then bring my concerns to you. So, that's why I'm here today. We had conferences with teachers last week, and really over the weekend, crystallized some of my concerns and wanted to share them. I'm here as a parent, but a lot of what brought me here today is driven by my professional interests. I am a professor at Illinois State University, go Redbirds, where I serve as the cross-endowed chair in the Scholarship of Teaching and Learning. And what that means is, I read, I do, and I mentor research on teaching and learning. It is my life, it is my professional avocation, and it's something I'm very passionate about. In particular, assessment is something that is my, something that I'm very, very concerned about. And so, my issue centers around the balance between formative and summative assessment, particularly in the high school grading policy. Just as a reminder, in case it's been a while and there's, you know, organizational amnesia as you guys are moving to different things, within the high school grading policy, currently teachers are mandated to weight sixty-five percent of a high school student's grade on summative assessment, so exams and cumulative kinds of experiences. Fifteen percent can be formative assessments, right? And so, those are your day-to-day quizzes and assignments and homework and different things like that. Ten percent is a midterm exam, and ten percent is a final exam. Together, that means that eighty-five percent of a student's grade in high school in this district has to do a summative assessment, which is usually an exam. Okay, so, coming back to the research piece of what brought me here, I have not found a single piece of educational research that says that kind of balance of measurement is good. What most research recommends is a balance, almost an equal balance, between formative and summative assessment, so that a student is not evaluated solely by how he or she does on an exam. Okay? And while your board policy does specify that summative assessment can include papers and projects and things like that, that is not the experience of a lot of students. They are being assessed primarily through exams. So, as a case study, I want to offer my experiences, the experiences of my son, and I'm going to be very honest, I don't expect perfection in my children, and if they don't meet the mark where they get an A or an A-plus, or whatever the case may be, that's fine with me, so long as they're working as hard as they can. And that is what I'm seeing in my son this year. Last year, as a sophomore at Richwoods, he had a four-point-seven out of four-point-oh. He had all weighted classes, he worked his tail off. I mean, this is not a kid for whom learning always comes easily, but he works incredibly hard. And he would spend hours every night, outside of his extracurricular activities, preparing for his day, and he performed beautifully. Super proud of how he's done. This year, with the new policy, he is earning almost a hundred percent Bs across the board, and he is working at his capacity. He's not a great test taker, but his homework, his daily projects, the things that he's doing that falls into formative assessment, he's earning a hundred percent. He's there every day, he's working. He takes one test, and his grade, which was probably a seventy-eight percent for the one I'm thinking about, brought his test, brought his grade in the class down by twelve percentage points. That's the impact when you have that kind of imbalance between formative and summative assessment. My son is not the only one. In his circle of friends, I have their parents reporting to me that they're choosing to put their kids in fewer extracurricular activities, they're doing less sports because they don't have the time, they're studying all the time. Several of the students have started to take anxiety medication. I mean, it's really a stress-inducing, you say, more success, less stress, and that we're having the opposite impact right now for a lot of these kids. My son is a junior, he knows that his grades this year are really important to get into college, and he has taken off his list his dream schools, because he knows that if his grades stay where they are, he won't even get looked at. And that's a lesson he has to learn, but it's a hard lesson when he's being impacted by a policy that he has no control over. So, what am I here for today? I am here to ask that you look soon at that policy, the implementation of that policy and the impact of that policy. Talk to your stakeholders. The teachers I've spoken to are very dissatisfied with this policy. They're lacking local control over their own grading schemes. They know best what's summative and what's formative, and they're not sure right now where to put that to have it be in line with your policy. I don't doubt that they're working very hard, they're working as hard as the kids are, but I think clarity and some investigation into this would be worthwhile. I also think that while teachers have been inserviced on what is formative and what is summative assessment, I think having a continued conversation about how, uh, how that could be implemented would be very, very valuable. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you. All right, if you-
Excuse me, ma'am? If you need a few more minutes, I-
Yeah, excuse me then.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was actually going to say, pursuant to two colon two-thirty, I could ask the chair for an extra minute or two?
Well, that's what I was waiting for. With the pleasure of the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I think about measuring learning. Eighty-five percent of a child's grade, a student's grade, being measured with an exam or a summative assessment is probably not the best way to go. So, I'd ask that maybe the grading committee look at some of the research on teaching and learning, and I'd be happy to provide a bibliography, I've been looking at one, to sort of guide a discussion about what might be the best balance and what might, what measuring learning might look like. My concern is that the kids in this district are measured as full students, not just as test takers. And I think that as a legacy to your students, it would be really, really nice for the mission of the district to be met through how the students are assessed. The last thing that I would ask is that the board or administration within the district have a conversation with teachers, with principals, about ways that summative assessment can look. If you look at research on teaching and learning, you can give a student a C on a test, they might earn a C on a test, but if they can correct those mistakes, they learn from that correction. So, how can that be built into the summative assessment process? How can other projects and other papers and different kinds of things become summative assessments, so that a kid isn't just measured by being a really bad test taker? I think that, I think that that'll do it for me. So, thank you for the extra time, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Linda Wilson?
Good afternoon, good evening, good night. It's been a long day. My name is Linda Wilson, and my address is eighteen-twenty-three South Idaho in Peoria. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Karat and President Ross and other board members. I'm a second-grade teacher at True Win, and I'm the Political Diversity Director for Peoria Federation of Teachers, Local 78. I come before you tonight to ask you to ponder the possibility of renaming some of our schools. As it currently stands, Peoria Public Schools has twenty-seven schools in its school district, and only one school is named after a person of color, and that's Valeska Hinton. However, another school, Woodrow Wilson, is named after one of our country's controversial former presidents. As president, Woodrow Wilson showed one of the first viewings of a birth, The Birth of a Nation, a movie that glorified the KKK and portrayed African-Americans as uncivilized. He implemented segregation in the United States Post Office, in the Department of Treasury, and the Navy. Since the majority of Peoria Public School students are of color, now is the time to send a message to our students that they belong to a school district that appreciates and promotes diversity. I can't think of another way to demonstrate this appreciation to our students, to our parents, and to our community than to rename some of our schools in honor of important persons of color. We have a variety of people to choose from locally. We have John Gwin, group member Ernestine Jackson, her husband Don Jackson, John Parker, Sam Polk, Richard Pryor, Harry Stifis, Sean Livingston, Elise Ford Allen, or just to name a few. On the national level, Harriet Tubman, Sojourner Truth, Booker T. Washington, Nat Turner, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Maya Angelou, Barack Obama, Rosa Parks, Caesar Chavez, Jesse Owens, Langston Hughes. This lack of diversity for school names is not limited to just people of color. We also currently have only one school named after a woman. Honorable past legends such as Betty Friedan, and Annie J. Gordon, and Susan G. Komen would be great candidates. And we have living legends that also deserve some type of honor, Mrs. Arthur May Perkins, Jahann Gordon Booth, Hedy Elliott, Beth Kreider-Derry, Jan Deisler, Jackie Petty, Bernice Gordon Young, Claire Howard, and Elaine Hopkins. These hard-working and strong women have changed the lives of our students and the people of our community, and they deserve at least a program or a scholarship being named in their honor. There are also several schools that have a stigma associated with their name, and so renaming a school in the honor of a person that I just mentioned could give those schools a fresh start. I'm asking that you at least begin the dialogue during your next building committee, and perhaps form a committee to embark on the process. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and peace be with you.
Thank you. Karen Guy?
Hi, I'm Karen Gast with K2 Benefits, and I will make this very brief. As you can probably guess, I am here in support of Number Seven and Number Eight tonight. I always like to thank the people that we work with. K2 Benefits works with some really incredible people here at Peoria's schools. So, from the insurance committee, we have multiple people, but tonight we have with us Tanya Strong, and she is truly an advocate for her people and for the teachers, and all of the unions are represented really well. We have administrators, so I'm gonna recognize the people that are here tonight. Mike McKenzie, Carla Eman, Jerry Hammer, as you guys have heard me say before, but I don't think I can say it too many times, I work with her on practically a daily basis, and she is amazing, dedicated excellence, and I just really enjoy working with her. And Mick Willis has been just fantastic, I cannot say enough great things about him. So, let's see, Number Seven, I'm really excited to be at the podium again this year, saying we have a decrease in some fixed costs, so your reinsurance stays at basically, you know, everything the same, there's actually a couple of things that just make it a little cooler, but, so that's really good, and a decrease in your rates of approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars, actually a little over sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, I would definitely recommend that you guys would approve that tonight. And then also, Legal Shield, Identity Shield, this is, will replace the LifeLock offering. What I like about this is not only are the rates decreasing again, it offers identity theft protection as well as with the LifeLock did, but in addition, we can now offer a Legal Shield benefit, which is really great, and wonderful benefit to the employees. It's totally voluntary, a hundred percent paid by the employees, but we hope that you allow them to offer it to the people. Thank you so much for your service, you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Tanya Strong?
Hello, Tanya Strong. Good evening, Superintendent Karat, President Ross, and members of the board. I come before you tonight to basically reiterate what Karen just said, to encourage you to vote yes to Agenda Item Seven and Eight. Number Seven, after thorough review, the insurance committee recommends that you approve Option Number One with Pareta, which allows and results in sixty-eight thousand dollar savings. I do want to reiterate, this is for our reinsurance, which is when someone is above the two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar threshold. I don't want to send a message to the public that we are saving sixty-eight thousand dollars on our insurance. This is if someone has a severe medical condition that would basically rob our self-funded plan, that this is a life insurance policy, if you'll say, that protects our pot of money for all. This maintains the same level of coverage with a stronger contract type. Agenda Item Number Eight, we currently offer LifeLock, and we are proposing a replacement with Identity Shield with the avid benefit of Legal Shield. Again, a hundred percent employee paid, but our employees could be getting better benefits and better rates. Something I just learned the other day with the Equifax breach, that they do not monitor, they do not monitor mail fraud. So, one of the other reportings does monitor mail fraud. So, something to consider, that, and this was also something that the Identity Shield did do, so for example, if someone gets a credit card in your name and you're working during the day and they pick up your mail, you might not know it till they've had a little bit of fun. So, it was something that we, I always like when I learn new things that I didn't previously know, and that is something that TransUnion does offer with the Identity Shield. So, I like to learn new things, and I actually share that with my students during class today, I tied it into daily oral language, we were talking about one thing which led to another, and anytime I can add something that they might not already know, I like to add that. Finally, switching gears, I want to thank those board members who visit our schools and respond to concerns as well as praises. Please realize, your input as well as your presence in our schools is essential to the educational process. I encourage all of you to take some time and visit our schools. Like we heard tonight, ninety-nine percent of it is all good, like Ms. Jackson said, but we need help on the one percent that are sometimes not allowing teachers, as well as some of our substitutes, to deliver the best education for all of our students of District 150. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amir Gassim, Basemi, sorry about that, I probably messed that up. Amir, how are you tonight?
Good evening, President Ross, respected board members, and Dr. Karat, I'm Amar Al Semih, three-nine-two-two North Columbus. I first wanted to start by thanking Dan Walter for attending, you know, the Islamic Center Peoria Open House. You know, we have one every year, and he came, and he actually talked to the staff, and met with the principal, the students, the community members, and he was a great guy, everybody loved him, so thank you so much for coming. So, there's a couple of things I just wanted to follow up. First, the, you know, the issue of Officer Ryan Schubert. I know he's currently on administrative leave, paid administrative leave, and I'm not sure if there was any decision made, you know, as a concerned citizen and also as an activist and a member of the NAACP, I'm really concerned about the, you know, racial remarks he has made or insults towards one of the greatest men of our U.S. history, MLK, and, you know, just I'd like, you know, to see a firm decision, you know. I'm not saying you have to, you know, just punish the guy, honestly, because feeling, I feel so bad for what he's done, but, you know, looking at everything, but also, you know, within the context of his history of service, he's done heroic, great things. You know, he saved an eight-years-old boy's life back in 2011, I believe, in Pekin, when he was a district park officer. He's also recently helped an African-American student to get a new bike after his bike was stolen. So, he seems like a very decent person, I'm just, you know, I'm hoping that we can come to, you know, resolution at least and bring this matter into an end, because we keep receiving racial, at least two or three a week, you know, I don't even go into the details, there are, like, incidents are happening within our school district. Also, there's an epidemic, and I hate to use that word epidemic, but, you know, after seeing the amount of teenage pregnancies within our school district among teens, and, you know, looking at the national numbers, I was really stunned, you know. And again, this is not something that just started happening, it's been happening for so long. In nineteen-eighty-six, we earned, Peoria County specifically, you know, earned the nation's worst county for out-of-woodlock pregnancies, specifically within teenage girls, fifteen to nineteen. And we still, like, you know, within six-one, six-oh-five, we are actually five times the national rate, five times for teenage live births between, you know, the ages of fifteen to nineteen, you know, so girls fifteen to nineteen, that's cool, that's, I mean, they're still going to school, right? And, you know, stats proved that forty percent of those, of those, like, teenage moms will graduate, and most likely, they would live in poverty. So, you know, I had a discussion with Dan, I remember, I told him, you know, I graduated, I'm not talking about, like, you know, a religious academy here, or a Catholic or Islamic school, I graduated a very secular private school. I graduated a very secular private school. A lot of you know the famous actor Omar Sharif. He graduated from the same high school, actually, it's called Victor College, that's what they call it. Anyway, it's a British school. And honestly, at first, it used to be like boys and girls, and there used to be like pregnancies and there used to be the same exact drama that we're dealing with here. But then the school board decided at one point, do you know what, we're going to make this all boys' school, and the girls also will separate them into a different part of the school, and we will not mix classes together. And guess what? That resolved the situation totally. There was, we had like zero teenage pregnancies from that point on. Same thing with my sister, she graduated all girls' high school, zero. I'm not saying we'll bring that number until like zero, but at least it's going to cut half, if not more, of the teenage live births and pregnancies, and not to mention all the, I mean, I read like some scary numbers. We have eight times the national average of gonorrhea and six times the national average of chlamydia, and some of the zip codes like 6105, 61605, and 61604, and three, double the national average. So, you know, I hope that this is something that we can consider, and we have to put a stop to, you know, or an end to this, you know, dilemma that I think is destroying a lot of these kids' future and their kids' also future as well. And I want to end by also reminding you that, you know, next weekend is going to snow. So I'm sure you all know what I'm referring to. They should have been, I've been talking about for a year now, the school busing, so I hope we can find a resolution before these kids walk to school three miles a day, so 1.5 back and forth, that's three miles. So I hope we can find a resolution before the snow, you know, hits our rooms. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bob Salaski?
I'm Bob Salaski. I'm an alumnus of Woodruff High School. Well, you've got some heavy subjects tonight. I feel embarrassed to even take a minute and a half to talk about my trivial subject. But I appeared before you some weeks ago to talk about the Woodruff Observer. Beginning at Kingdon Grade School, at Kingdon High School, and then continuing at Woodruff, the students produced an award-winning school newspaper, The Observer. And these observers documented the important, the interesting, and of course, the trivial activities of 18,000 kids that went through Woodruff High School. Those papers were just falling apart in front of us. And so the alumni took on a project to preserve these papers, and so we spent the last year photographing 3,500 pages of the Woodruff Observer newspaper, and we have put them on a flash drive. Isn't that amazing? You know, pile high this, pile of papers, and we've got a little flash drive with 3,500 pages of Woodruff history. I've given one to the Peoria Library, I'm going to give one to the Peoria Historical Society, and tonight I'd like to give one to your, for your archives. And Dan Walter, if you ever want your great-grandkids, great-great-grandkids want to know what you did in football and track, it's forever going to be in your archives.
Thank you. Any responses to audience presentation? Dr. Carratt?
Thank you, President Ross, in reference to Dr. Champion Freiberg. It's really nice to get feedback from parents around the impact of newly implemented policies. I was with you all the way through. It is my understanding that teachers were the ones who served that on the committee and sort of built this thing. So it's one thing to build it, and then it's another thing to sort of study the impact. It just so happened this evening that Susan Gershonich, who's over our curriculum department and chaired this project, is not able to join us this evening. I do have your number, it's 472, right? Okay, thought it was 477.
It's not there.
Yeah, I know, that's where, I, that's it, that's it. Yep, that's it. I wasn't going any further, I had, I could, I, yeah, I got you.
We're streaming to thousands of people.
She'll follow up with you, and then we can strategize from there.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I really appreciate you sharing your personal experience with us. I'm a huge proponent also of formative assessment. So, yeah, then, Mr. Carl left. And then, yeah, I had a couple of emails from a variety of individuals, including the mayor. We were talking back and forth, and Mo, maybe you can even help too in terms of those stats, STI, teenage pregnancy, and one thing I think I want the listening audience to know, this is, it's Peoria County, right? It's not Peoria Public Schools numbers, so that's one thing folks need to remember. And then I would say, you know, yeah, we're doing, we have the curriculum, we have the testing initiatives going on with some partners, and, but folks need jobs. Folks need a lot of help. They need, and it's just societal ills just rearing its ugly head. And so this is much bigger than Peoria Public School, Peoria Public Schools, right? So is there anything else you'd like to add to that? I know you're the champion for that project.
No, just the community that, just as we worked on for two years, we opened up an school health clinic at Peoria High, where it's been, get yourself tested. We've had events at Manuel and Peoria High. We're working on two per year, we're in the process of scheduling at Richwoods for the first time. The youth advisory student pride team actually was part of the Recreative Health Committee meeting in September at Peoria High, which was awesome to have that student voice on that Recreative Health Committee team. So I'm also a part of that team. Our next meeting is Wednesday at the Health Department, so there's a lot of work happening, but we have so much work to do, and it's so much a societal big issue for our whole system.
If you're high, last year alone, you had 85, 85 girls.
Yes. Yeah, I have all the data.
85, so it's still Peoria District, this school district, not just a county, county is just a bigger picture.
Yes.
Yeah, we invested quite a bit in, at Peoria High, we have the health clinic there, and I'm happy you reminded us of that. And overall, as a state, the teenage pregnancy, the teenage pregnancy numbers are down. I think it's fourth. It used to be number one.
We are one and two for the STIs. I'd have to double-check the teen pregnancy where we stand now, but it is incredibly high. So we are still a priority district, as identified by the State Board of Education. We have been since 2013. And I think we're going to that state conference Friday in Bloomington at ISU.
And so has the city of Peoria, right?
I do want to say that, you know, I'm kind of the historian on this board, and we are so much better than we were when it was so much higher when the United Way, I worked at United Way, we did this big study working with the Health Department, which created, really helped create the whole center. As a result of that, it's so much better now than it was then. So it seems kind of cyclical, if you will, on how things, and I guess it would be good to study what's going on with the ills of the community that actually have some effect on this. But it is, it's an ongoing problem, but it is a community problem more so than a school district problem.
And as Dr. Carratt said, we have to focus on getting our students careers, jobs, or going to college, instead of having, you know, being moms and dads when they're so young. That's where our focus needs to be, for sure.
Okay, so any other responses? Mary, you had a response?
Yeah, I had a response. This is the second time I've been at a meeting when the Woodruff Society has come forward to talk about journalism. Last time they mentioned that there were no public high schools with a newspaper. Richwoods does have a newspaper.
That's right.
I'm in charge of it. We exist. Please check us out, we love your support. We love local businesses to start advertising again. But also, I would like to say, our advisor, Dr. Currents, has gone on his own, is already digitizing our previous editions, and that's on the Richwoods website. So, yeah, I love to hear that people care about journalism in our schools, but also go out and read it, because we are there, we do exist, and I really like to say thank you to people who are doing that upon themselves, like Dr. Currents and that individual, to put it online and make it accessible for more people.
Keep saying it at every.
Only $5 at Richwoods.
Is that an ad?
Seven editions for those.
Thanks, Mary, please, bringing that up at every meeting.
Put me on, Mary. I'll subscribe.
Okay.
Send me an invoice.
Put me on under Dr. Carratt.
Well, matter of fact, put all the board members on Dr. Carratt's.
And send an invoice to us, each one of them.
Okay, so approval of, I like on a motion to approve a minutes from October 11, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Since we moved to second, would you please call the role?
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye. And the information items proposed expenditures over $2,500. Have anyone have any questions for Mr. Willis?
It seemed like a, I hate to even say this, but like a really small list. This, like, the dollar amount and the list were very small, it's just like kind of a weird anomaly.
A very welcome anomaly.
Thank you. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request, Dr. Carratt?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Ross. Since our last board meeting on October 10th, we received six new requests, and out of that, two were filled. There were two pending requests noted on October 10th. These were also filled. To date, we have received 56 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $3,118 and no sense.
Thank you. Action items. First is the consent agenda.
The consent agenda consists of 11 items this evening. The first item is gifts to the school district. This meeting totals $13,681.07, and year-to-date, we're at $43,133.07. And I did want to point out, we had an action item last week, or last meeting relating to Sterling School LEAP program, and we are reflecting a donation of $6,960 by Mr. Carl Cannon back into the program from our previous expenditure. Item two is payment of bills. Item three is the payment for travel. Item four is a board travel request for the Great Lakes Turn Conference. Item five is a human resources report. Item six is a field trip approval for the Richwoods High School Boys Soccer Team to Burlington, Iowa. Item number seven is the renewal of the reinsurance. Item eight is the Legal Shield/Identity Shield. Item nine is the plan for the Peoria Stadium digital sign. Item 10 is the salaries and regulations for auxiliary personnel for fiscal year 2017-18. And item 11 is the school-wide plans of Charter Oak Primary, Franklin Primary, Glen Oak Community Learning Center, Harrison Community Learning Center, Heinz Primary, Jamison, Keller Primary, Lincoln, Lindberg Middle School, Northmore Primary, Quest, Roosevelt, Thomas Jefferson, Treewind, Valeska Hinton, Woodyer Primary, Woodrill Wilson Primary, Calvin Coolidge Middle, Mark Bills Middle, Rolling Acres Middle, Sterling Middle, Vaughn Steuben Middle, Manuel Academy, Richwoods High School, and Peoria High. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items any board member would like pull for a separate vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion for, to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the entirety of the consent agenda.
Second. Are there any questions or comments on any of the items, one through 11? Mr. Walter?
Just a comment on Number Seven, I guess, and Eight. I just really appreciate the collaborative nature, the work between the administration and the unions in K2. They seem to do a good job, and this is like, I think, the third time we've gotten a decrease in something in, in an era where everything in insurance goes up. I think they've made some good efforts to work together, and I just want to thank all of you for the effort you've done.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion questions? Seeing none, would you please call the role?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye. Deliberation, agenda, suspension review.
Item number, thank you. Item number 12, I move that the suspension review listed on the report dated October 23, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Would you call the role?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Aye. Deliberation.
Item number 13, I move that the expulsion, with expulsion held and the bans listed on the report dated October 23, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Walker?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members? Are there any? Mr. Walter?
My friend Amir left. I was going to say, assalamu alaikum, which is Arabic for peace be upon you, which goes to show you my Arabic is about as bad as my Spanish.
Amalekum.
Stand corrected. No, I did pass out to the board members a disc that I did get at the, visiting the Islamic Center. They were very receptive, and it's a good group, and they've reached out, interdenominational group, and so it was a good visit to the other. So I just shared this with everybody.
He's here.
Oh, he is here, thank you. So I'm sorry about my, I'm bad with it, but I just want to thank you. It was a good visit, and I appreciate it.
And what was the language? Go ahead and speak the language.
Hopefully we can have more of you guys next time.
But, no, it was a good thing, and the other comment I had, I just appreciated the lady from ISU who made the comments and stuff with it too. I think we had some really good comments, and the gentleman from Woodruff is our historian there, and they've done a good job. So, I mean, we had a lot of comments this time that were particularly good, so thank you.
Thank you. Reports of board, I'm sorry.
Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated has a mentorship program, go to high school, go to college, for young males, eighth grade through 12th grade, that'd be tomorrow at 6 o'clock at Manuel High School.
Okay, any other reports from board committees?
We, go ahead.
Okay.
We've got a building committee this Wednesday at 9 o'clock. And just as a suggestion, I think we're going to add Mrs. Wilson's issue for the building committee to discuss on other, on the naming of buildings. We'll just add that to our topic under other.
Okay, I see. Okay, you might want to talk to superintendent first.
Oh, sure. Always do. Almost always.
Mr., he says almost, sorry.
Almost, always.
Mr. Shaw?
The Policy Committee will meet November 15 at 9:30 a.m. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other committees? Seeing none?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Say it loud.
All in favor?